Good evening. Welcome to the February 27, 2024, meeting of the Oshkosh County Council. With the city clerk, could please take the roll?
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
Hayes?
Present.
Esslinger?
Here.
Mugawar?
Here.
Seven present.
Leading us in the invocation tonight will be Deputy Mayor Erickson.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we honor those who have come before us, including the original stewards of this area, the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
This evening, we have students from Carl Trager Elementary, as well as Carl Trager Middle School, here to help us with the pledge. If you wouldn't mind kind of coming right up there.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nicely done. Thank you for being here this evening and leading us through the pledge. And thank you to your parents and guardians for bringing them this evening to help us through this. We've got, as I mentioned, students from Carl Trager Elementary and Carl Trager Middle. I'm going to give you the mic. Why don't you give us your name? Let us know maybe what grade you're in and if you have a favorite subject and/or, you know, if you've got a favorite teacher down there as well.
My name is Hiba Malik. I'm in eighth grade, and one of my favorite teachers is Mrs. Libly.
My name is Lucy Ablon. I'm in fifth grade, and my favorite subject is reading.
My name is Clara Ablam. I'm in second grade, and my teacher's Miss Witt, and my favorite subject is writing.
All right. Next up, we do have a proclamation that was issued. Unfortunately, the recipient couldn't be here this evening. It's on the agenda, so we can read it. And then we'll move on to, I believe, we have a presentation this evening as well. So proclamation issued this evening. Whereas social work is a profession truly dedicated to helping people with their primary mission being to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic and complex needs of all people. And whereas social workers put a particular focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed, or living in poverty while following a code of ethics that calls on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. And whereas social workers meet people where they are, help people and communities reach their full potential. And whereas social workers are on the front lines in helping the nation solve pressing social problems in all facets of our society, including schools, hospitals, community organizations, the military, mental health centers, social service agencies, corporations, and local, state, and federal government to address mental health, addiction, and economic inequalities. And whereas social workers are in high demand, with some states reporting shortages in social work staffing and the Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest-growing professions in our nation during the decade. And whereas the 2024 Social Work Month theme Empowering Social Workers embodies the need for society to support social workers so they can continue to do the life-affirming work they do and help address societal needs. And whereas social workers in turn empower people, communities, and our nation to help everyone achieve their full potential. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Oshkosh recognizes March 2024 as National Social Work Month and calls upon all citizens to join with the National Association of Social Workers in celebration and support of the social work profession. So thank you. With that, I think we have a presentation that's... Yep. Roundabout improvements. We have Parks and CVB. Welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, County Council. I'm here to present the proposal to rejuvenate the roundabouts throughout the City of Oshkosh that we had discussed during the 2024 Budget Workshop last fall. So, just a brief history on it. The first roundabout was installed at Jackson Street and Murdoch Ave in 2010. Shortly thereafter, 10 more were installed with the reconstruction of Interstate 41. And then there is also one more that was placed at the intersection of Algoma Boulevard and Furno Ave. After that, since then, there's really been very little maintenance or minimal maintenance done to them, just through lack of manpower. In 2021, community groups, interest was raised by groups in the community to beautify the downtown improvement district, the bid, and rejuvenate some of the roundabouts. Phase one of this funding or phase one of this project interest was to raise funding to support and create a new city horticulturist position that would maintain both the downtown bid and the roundabouts. So shortly thereafter, that position was created and has been working at that since. Phase two of this interest is to rejuvenate the roundabouts and thereby making the entrance ways through the cities more aesthetically pleasing and inviting and as well as reducing the maintenance. So research was started on this in 2022 on how this could be achieved. After much thought and revisions and some designs emerged that would make the roundabouts and the associated islands safer, more aesthetically pleasing, and easier to maintain by adding the extra ring of river rock, selecting more desirable species, and spacing fewer of them throughout that ring. That will give the staff an adequate work area, making weed control and other maintenance tasks easier and more efficient. The roundouts will also consume less mulch with the decorative rock ring. And to make things safer while working on the Island 21 roundabout, there will be a rotten granite parking pad for the staff to be able to park their vehicle on the island instead of having to try and cross with bags full of debris during high-traffic times. There are two additional locations in the proposal, one being the approximately 800-foot median island at the intersection of I-41 and Highway 44, and the other being the county-maintained roundabout at the I-41 and Highway 45 interchange. The total cost for this proposal is approximately $220,000. The total contribution from the city is proposed to be $150,000, with the remainder coming from the community partners. We're also looking at redoing the full rock signs on the base of the entryway signs, which I don't have on there. And installing the fifth entryway sign, which is currently in storage at the corner, at the northwest corner of Jackson and Murdoch interchange. That would be a completely separate project when funding is secured and identified for that one. So, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Builo?
I just had one question about the rock ring that you put in to replace the granite, because obviously we see people cutting, you know, the corner if they have a big truck or whatever. How is that rock ring going to hold up to...
The rock ring isn't actually replacing the granite. It is that the rotten granite ring is going to stay there. The river rock is actually going to go inside where mulch is now. So it's actually going to take up an extra eight feet of mulch. So...
Okay, I was looking at...
Yep.
Go right ahead.
Do we feel good about being able to maintain this with current staffing levels after this is built?
Yes, we most definitely do, because it's, we're going to, like I said, we're going to actually remove some plants, add fewer plants back in that are more maintenance-friendly, give them the spacing so that we can do the weed control a lot easier.
Cool.
So, thank you.
I see no other questions? Thank you very much. Next up, citizen statements to council. We have, looks like John Peterson is registered to speak. If you'd like, please come on up. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was all one. My bad. My apologies. For some reason, I thought it was combined. Wait one second. Amy Albright in the CVB? Was that, do you have your own separate one?
Oh, I don't, no.
Oh, okay. I thought it was combined.
I will say that...
Why don't you come on up to the mic, if you don't mind?
I was just saying, I usually don't need a microphone.
No, no, you don't.
It's kind of embarrassing, but it's true. Also, I said, "Don't give me a microphone," because that could be dangerous. But just on behalf of the Community Foundation and the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau, the reason we are interested in this project is this is a pride-of-place thing. This is a first impression when you drive into Oshkosh. Our roundabouts, really, they just don't look great. And we're able to provide some funding that we feel like, I was kind of teasing that it's sort of a hefty coupon for the project, but looking at this private-public partnership to get this done, especially with the horticulturist position that we've instilled. Travis has been working hard. We've been talking about this really since like 2021. And I think it's one of those things we take for granted when we live here. We don't maybe notice, but we welcome lots of visitors all the time. This is our first impression. We're trying to attract workforce here. This is a quality-of-life thing, and I think we expect people to keep up their businesses and their homes and things like that. We need to put our best foot forward, and I think this is a great opportunity to grab some of these public funds and private funds and mesh them up and get a project done that I think will make a big difference in our community. So, that's it. Any questions for us?
I don't see any. Thank you. Now we're up to Mr. John Peterson. I promise, the floor is yours this time. I only had one. I don't, but you can go right after. Yep, go right ahead, sir.
I'm John Peterson. I am a member of Wisconsin United to amend. And in January of 2010, the Supreme Court overturned a century of established precedent by ruling that corporate spending on candidate elections cannot be limited. The result has been unprecedented spending by corporations and unions in our elections. Those who finance candidates' campaigns gain unprecedented influence with the candidate they fund. The voice of the ordinary citizen has been drowned out by interests with access to vast resources of campaign contribution dollars. The corrupting influence of uncontrolled spending on political campaigns has widespread destructive consequences felt at the federal, state, and local levels. This corruption is devastating communities all over America and eviscerating the ability of local governments to protect and provide opportunity for their citizens. Across many polls and surveys in the United States in the past five years, 85% to 95% of citizens, Republicans, independents, and Democrats, think there should be limits on the amount of money corporations, unions, and PACs can contribute to organizations influencing our politicians. This desire to restore our republic and representation is clearly nonpartisan. About 2/3 of small business owners support similar resolutions to create a more level playing field for them to compete with large corporations. Likewise, the amendment would benefit local municipalities, which have been losing funding and legislative control over local issues as wealthy and powerful interests in Wisconsin and Washington acquire ever greater influence over our elected officials. Corporations and wealthy individuals' unparalleled ability to drown out the voice of ordinary people through unlimited spending in elections inevitably wears down an electorate that has already been losing faith in politicians at all levels. Citizens mistrusting its government to the point where they abstain from voting is a huge threat to our representative democracy, both on a local and federal level. United to amend is calling for an amendment to the U.S. Constitution to clarify that ineligible rights belong to human beings only and that money is not a form of protected free speech under the First Amendment and can be limited in political campaigns. Our Constitution can be amended by Congress by a 2/3 vote in both houses, or the people can demand it if 2/3 of state legislatures demand it. It takes a strong movement to back an effort to amend the U.S. Constitution. Getting municipalities to pass resolutions is helping bring pressure upon our state legislators to take up this issue. In Wisconsin, over 170 municipalities, including towns, cities, villages, and counties, have passed similar resolutions. As a result of community grassroots action, 22 states have similarly called for a constitutional amendment. Wisconsin is not yet one of them. Towns across the state and country realize that they have lost and continue to lose their home rule sovereignty to the powerful politicians who represent the interests of their funders. Town leaders increasingly realize that they have lost the ability to serve and protect their local citizens. Locally, Appleton, Minasha, Nina, Fond du Lac, Grand Chute, Green Bay, and Madison are among those having already approved the resolution to amend. Oshkosh is one of the most important cities yet to pass this resolution. Thank you for listening. Are there any questions?
Don't see any. Thank you. If you'd like, please come on up, and then if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cheryl Hanson, and I live at 874 Nebraska Street in Oshkosh. I'm sorry you didn't get my sign up. I don't know what happened to it.
We're all good.
Anyway, thank you for this opportunity to bring this to your attention. I became a Wisconsin United to amend volunteer in 2019. Wisconsin United to amend is a grassroots, nonpartisan organization that has been in existence since 2011. Along with a group of volunteers, we had planned to obtain signatures for a ballot referendum petition supporting a constitutional amendment declaring that corporations, unions, nonprofits, and similar entities are not human beings endowed with constitutional rights and that spending money is not a form of speech. I addressed this council in March of 2020, outlining our plans. Shortly thereafter, the country shut down because of the pandemic. We all know that big money in politics is destroying our democracy. Most people are aware that the Supreme Court Citizens United ruling in 2010 eliminated all efforts to limit campaign donations. Most legislators who are recipients of large campaign donations are not willing to fix the problem because they benefit from it. Why is this a local issue? In response to large campaign donations, legislators are more likely to pass bills favorable to the corporations and mega-millionaires supporting them. I personally suspect that local examples of this impact might be things like the dark store tax loophole that resulted in lawsuits against this city by several corporate retailers. I also suspect that it might have resulted in the state law forbidding municipalities from implementing a vehicle registration fee for vehicles weighing more than 8,000 pounds, even though it's the large dump trucks, box trucks, and semis that do the most damage to local roads. And I can contest to that. I live on Ninth Avenue, and they go by all day long. In addition, legislators are more likely to pass multiple state laws that take away local rights or to pass unfunded mandates to be carried out by local government. Bills regarding this proposed constitutional amendment have been introduced in both federal and state legislative bodies with every new legislative session since 2013. The state bills for 2023/2024 are AJR 92 and SJR 82. To date, no action has been taken. Why a resolution now instead of a referendum? Because in June of 2023, the State Revenue Sharing Bill, Act 12, was passed. This bill eliminated the use of municipal referendums as a means of advising our state legislators regarding what the people they represent would like to see accomplished. We now only have municipal boards and city councils' resolutions as a means of advising our senators and assembly representatives. We have given you a packet of information supporting our request for passage of the Oshkosh Council Resolution in the proposed format. Our hope is that you add this resolution to your agenda for a vote in the very near future. It would be great to have Wisconsin join the 172 Wisconsin communities that have already passed the resolution or referendums, along with the 12 faith groups that have also passed supporting resolutions. This is a long-term grassroots project, similar in scope to the women's suffrage movement. 22 states have already passed resolutions supporting a constitutional amendment. We hope that the increasing numbers of Wisconsin municipalities that have passed this will move our state legislators to become the 23rd state. A constitutional amendment will take time to pass, but it is a better course of action. Any new Congress can overturn or rewrite legislation passed by previous Congresses. You can find out more information by going to wiuta.org or read the article we included in your packet from the Oshkosh Herald that was related to the October presentation, or consider attending the learning and requirement session coming up March 14 from 1:30 to 3 o'clock at Evergreen Retirement Community, when George Penn from United to amend will be speaking and will be available to answer your questions. Any questions for me? Did I run over?
No, you're good.
I thought I was...
Thank you very much.
I point you especially to this as a graphic of what's happened since 2010.
And that was in the packet, right?
Yes, it's in the packet.
Thank you. Do have one other citizen who has registered to speak, didn't note an agenda item. Robert Gluth?
For item 21.
Oh, I think Carl wants to say something.
Well, yeah, I was going to ask, just a point of order, like, I would like that to be on a future agenda to discuss. Does that create, do I need to move to do that?
We can do that later, future agenda items.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem at all. All right, moving on to consent agenda. I have no one registered to speak on any consent agenda items. I'll take a motion and a second for those.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Any discussion on any consent agenda items? Seeing none, if you'll please take the roll.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Next up, we have pending ordinances. Ordinance 24-93, rename, recodify, and amend the following chapters and provisions of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. Chapter 3, Currently Advertising to Finance. Chapter 5, Currently Amusements to Special Events. Chapter 8, Currently in General to Permits and Licenses. Chapter 12, Currently Finance to Property and Purchasing. Chapter 17-12, Currently Advertisements on Private Property Without Owner's Consent Prohibited to Notices, Advertisements, and Bill Posting. And move the provisions in the current Chapter 18 to new Chapter 8 and repeal Chapter 18 currently licenses. So take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Ford?
Yep, just, city staff confirm, this is just cleaning up our ordinances. This is no substantive policy change. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, if you'll take the role on 24-93.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Ordinance 24-94, amend definition of overtime parking and basic penalties for violation of parking provisions. No one's registered, so I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Stevenson?
I guess, staff, do you want to give us just, I guess, a rundown on, I know we looked at comparables for each city, but just a rundown on why the fees are going up?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. This is part of the process that we go through annually to review fees and charges, and we haven't updated these penalties in a number of years. And we did a survey of surrounding municipalities and had a pretty thorough discussion about the need to make the penalty be significant enough that people will actually comply, because there are some people that merely say, "Well, I'll take the ticket and not worry about it because it's relatively inexpensive." So this adds enough oomph to it to create a disincentive for people to do the violation.
And I guess with those violations, are we seeing them more, is this more of a downtown issue? Is this a side-street parking issue? Is it everywhere?
It's a little bit of everywhere. That's why the 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., you know, that's a city-wide thing. A lot of it, you know, in the central city, but that does apply everywhere. So you can see that, you know, we haven't updated that in a number of years, and I think some people view it as, well, it's a $15 parking fee that you pay. $30 gets a little more sting to it and creates a disincentive for people to do that.
If there's no other questions, you can take the role on 24-94.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
24-95, amend Section 27-36 and Appendix 27B regarding designation of parking spaces in downtown municipal parking lots. Transportation Committee recommends approval. We do have, I do have one person registered to speak, Mr. Chris Larson.
Easy one for me tonight. Chris Larson, 502 North Main. I'm here on behalf of the downtown Oshkosh bid, just in case you have any questions. Most of you got info from me on this way back to early last summer. We've been talking about this. I know it's been a newsletter a couple times. Thank you, Mark, for that. Your pre-read for this evening from Mr. Collins, I thought, was fantastic. It summarizes all this very well. Mark informed me earlier that he is not here, so if you have questions, I can help answer those as well. So I'm just here really if things come up, because we are happy about this being here and propose it would be a huge asset to downtown. So if you need anything, I'll be over there.
Sounds good. Might have been the shortest amount of time you've taken speaking to us, too.
I'm not always long, but sometimes, not always.
Do we have any, I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion on 2495? Councilmember Stevenson?
Not really a ton of discussion, but staff, thanks for putting this together. It was really thorough, and I liked the amount of detail put into it and all the maps and stuff where I could physically go look at the parking stalls that were affected on this. So that was super helpful. Overall, I think this is a good move, just really cleaning up our parking situation and getting a little bit more customer parking downtown is good, so.
Well said. If there's nothing else, if you'll take the role on 24-95.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Mugawar?
Aye.
Carried seven?
Next up, we have ordinance 24-96. This is to approve changes to Chapter 3 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code to create a vehicle registration fee. Do have a few people registered. First up actually is Jennifer Sunstrom, then followed by Cheryl Lauretche. Welcome. Just a reminder, comments limit them to five minutes, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Sunstrom with the Realtors Association of Northeast Wisconsin. You should have received a memo from our association for the last time the council reviewed this issue. I'm just here to reinforce a couple of things. First of all, we just want to thank the city council and all of the staff for the enormous amount of time that you've put in to trying to address this issue and addressing special assessments. It's been a long road. I know it's not been a lot of fun, but it is appreciated. I know it's not been a lot of fun, but it is appreciated. Our association does support the proposal for the vehicle registration fee and the increase in utilities to try and lessen this burden on property owners. And it is an enormous burden on property owners, especially a disproportionate burden on low to moderate income property owners. So we appreciate the effort to try and find a solution to that. Secondly, we also, though, do not support proposals to potentially shift special assessments onto the property tax levy. Wisconsin, according to more studies, is still one of the top 10 tax states in property taxes in the country. This is not attractive when we are trying to recruit people from other states for our workforce. When they get here, there's two top things they see right away when they are trying to, for instance, purchase a home in our communities. One is income taxes, but another huge one is property taxes. A lot of the reports that have been done over the years say that we really need to try and diversify the way that we pay for local services and try to put less burden on the property tax. And this proposal, I think, does that of trying to find an alternative funding sources for services such as road reconstruction. So, you know, it's a difficult problem. It's not easy to solve. I think that you've probably come up with the best solutions to this, try and eliminate the problem, and we support what you have put forward. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Cheryl Lawrich, and then followed by Robert Gluth-Gluth. Good evening.
Hi. Hello, Cheryl Lawrich, 1107 Algoma Boulevard. So I am here tonight to voice my opposition, opposition to the wheel tax and utility increase proposal put forth by the council. In its current form and wording, I do not believe the proposal addresses all the moving parts of this issue adequately. I believe the timing of it is not a good fit for meeting Oshkosh where it is at currently in regards to these special assessments. In truth, I stand with and on both sides of this challenging issue, and that is why I feel the proposal, proposed wheel tax and utility increase does not go far enough. I do not wish or want for any homes or businesses to suffer under the financial burden these assessments can place. But I also do not believe if we are to move forward with this proposal that any homes or businesses that are active and outstanding should be left behind, abandoned, to suffer under the burden these assessments can place. Currently, it is my understanding that there are 2,765 outstanding parcels, homeowners or businesses, in the city. Of the money owed to the city, 30% of these parcels have had to choose 15-year repayment plans and 52% 10-year repayment plans. The remaining percentage is five years or less. All of these repayment plans have interest rates tied to them, 4%, 6%, or 8%, as you know. These 2,065 outstanding parcels deserve the acknowledgement, representation, and attention our city and council, and of our city and council, as much as those we have yet to assess. 10- to 15-year repayment plans, that is a lot. The proposal put forth by the council does not adequately address this. To move forward ripping off the Band-Aid without acknowledging how deep our collective wound is does us all a disservice. 15 years as we wait on parcels to finish payments is a long healing period. The people, parcels of Oshkosh, deserve your best and most equitable, sorry, most equitable and honorable resolution to this challenging issue, and I do not believe that this current proposal put forth fulfills that criteria. And I urge the council to oppose this proposal that I believe, as a council, and as you, sorry, excuse me, and I urge you to, urge the proposal, I believe who you are as a council, who we are as a community, and the numbers matter. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you. Robert Gluth, and I hope I'm saying that close.
That's right. I'm in Fall.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Robert Gluth. I live at 1628 River Mill Road, and I think it's a good step to change the way that we assess our roads, but I don't think it goes far enough. I think we have to have a broader revenue source, and the proposal before the council only maintains the status quo of how many miles of roads we get done a year. I would propose that we have some type of property tax assessment. I think 1/10th of 1% would generate something like $3.9 million in revenues. And you could then, at the same time, reduce the vehicle fee tax from $35 to $20, which is more of what's done for other cities in this area. And you could also reduce this utility allocation by probably $750,000 and still have $6.3 million available for road construction, which is about $2 million more than we're able to put for road construction right now. The roads are valuable to all of us, be a resident or be a business. If you're a resident, you need the roads to get fire protection there. You need the roads that the police protect, maybe most importantly, pick up the garbage. If you're a business, you need roads to get your employees to work. You need roads to get materials to your business, and you need roads to ship your goods, or if you're a service industry, to people into your business. I think it's a good step, but I don't think it goes far enough, so I would be opposed to this amendment right now. And if need be, then we have to have a referendum with the residents, either advisory or mandatory to see what we do. But I think most people agree that we need to do something with the roads, and I think unfortunately, we're paying for bad sins that we haven't done it. That's about all I have to say. If there's any questions, shoot away.
I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no one else registered to speak on this, so we'll take a motion and a second to put on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Don't everybody go at once. All right, well, no one's gonna go. Mr. Ford?
Might as well go while I'm still up here, right? So this proposal is a long time coming. We've been working on it for at least five years. Some people in this room served on committees over five years ago. So I really want to point out a couple of things that I hope will explain why I'm supporting this tonight. First thing is, this is about facts, has nothing to do with a motion. If you look at the Department of Revenue numbers, Oshkosh collects more in special assessments than any other city in Wisconsin. 191 cities, we're number one. Per capita, adjusting for population, we're fourth. So I've shared many times up here that data-driven governance means ensuring we're not outliers in critical quantifiable areas. That's one of the reasons I was so passionate about our debt. This is exactly the same thing. We're an extreme outlier, and our current policy isn't working. We need to fix it. I've heard some critiques that this is just a Band-Aid, and I'll push back on that because this covers what we need to cover. Like any policy, we're gonna need to revisit it every year. And while the vehicle registration fee is getting a lot of attention, I know that's what we're voting on here, the utility portion is a bigger deal to me because it covers more of our costs, and it's an area we'll probably see more volatility compared to the VRF. But make no mistake, this isn't like Appleton. We're not putting all of our eggs into one basket, and we're doing that for a very purposeful reason. We don't want to find ourselves a year from now, two years from now, where we don't have a funding source and we're coming back and begging for more. That was deliberate, and I appreciate city staff for working with us to make that happen. This doesn't cover utility assessments, so I've heard the argument that this is all about Clearville Road. This has nothing to do with Clearville Road. This policy doesn't address that. We gave direction to the city staff to bring us a deferral policy that would provide options for those facing massive assessments of any kind, including folks like, experiences like those on Clearville Road. And I expect we'll see that soon, and I hope we pass it as part of a comprehensive approach to special assessment reform. So yes, this is one piece of it. This is not the whole thing. This is not my first choice. If you've been around here, you know this. I favor a cap in a relief fund that refunds a portion of assessments paid over the past three, previous three or five years. I floated this idea two years ago at the previous council. I floated it with this council. There was not one community organization and not one colleague up here or in the previous council that agreed with a policy that went back, agreed with a cap policy. But I'm not mad about that. That's democracy. That's why there's seven of us and not just me. But I say that because we need to have a plan that addresses this policy, a plan that's actually accepted by the public and this council. That's what we have tonight. I do sympathize with the argument that it's not fair to people who have paid assessments in the past. I'm one of those. I'll be paying an assessment over the next 10 years. But excuse the really clumsy analogy, but I'm thinking of an intersection on Nevada, right by my house, where there were accidents left and right. It was uncontrolled. We put a stop sign there, right? We did that because that was the right thing to do. We didn't make the excuse that it's not fair to other people that had their car damaged. No, it was a problem. We addressed it. I'm not saying it's okay. I'm not saying it's ideal. It's not perfect. But when we have the opportunity to address a pressing policy issue that is objective, I think we have a duty to act. That's why we're up here. Lastly, I really do appreciate the chamber's desire to increase investments in our roads and the gentleman earlier saying we need to increase our investments. And this didn't come up at the previous, the most recent capital improvement budget process, and that's where we approved our spending plans for roads. There was no outside input about this then, but I really encourage the chamber and other folks to speak up at our next CIP, because with our improved debt situation, something that we can be thankful to previous councils for getting us to, there's probably room in there for us to do more. And over the summer during the budget process, that's a really appropriate time to bring that to a third piece of this puzzle. So I'll shut up now, I've talked enough, but really thank you to the colleagues, city staff, and really previous councils and work groups, because this has been going on for years. I'm just a small part of it, as are the people up here. We're building on the work of others. So as hard as it's been, we have a plan here that addresses the objective problem. It's well-studied, and it's legally defensible, so I'm happy to support it.
Hey, Councilmember Ford, Councilmember Builo, you're up next.
Thank you. I purposely went after Councilmember Ford because I've been following him on Facebook. He's a really good read, and I knew a lot of what he was gonna say, and he can say it more eloquently than me, so I just want to echo a lot of what he just said. One of my, I'd say, concerns with this process that we've gone through is many of the emails that we've gotten are, I like where you're going, but just do this instead, or just do that instead, or, you know, have you considered this? And the answer is yes, we've considered that. We have, I know I've only been on here for a year, and I've looked at about 21 different proposals of what we could possibly do, and I know councils before me have looked at a lot of the different ones. Many of the great ideas that have been put forth, we, you know, did bounce around our council, and some of them lead to the possibility of litigation. So there was not an appetite up here to, you know, to put forth a proposal that could get the City of Oshkosh in litigation. So this was the proposal that we came up with, that we could all agree, that, you know, it could move forward, we could take a really hard look at it, after we did consider many, many different options. So I just wanted to really emphasize that this was not done overnight, not done hastily, not done without a lot of really hard thought put into it by city staff and then vetted by the counselors as, you know, if it was an easy fix, we would have picked that one. But there isn't an easy fix for it.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Ditto to whatever you think these guys said. Just a few other highlights, I guess. I'm really happy with this proposal. I think, like, everybody has kind of said, it was a compromise all around, but I think a good compromise and something that benefits everybody in our community. Special assessments was really one of the reasons I started first getting involved in city government was because our neighborhood got hit so bad with these. And I think, as Jennifer kind of pointed out, I come from a central city neighborhood, very small lots, house values are pretty low, and they're still getting hit with very high special assessments, and in relation to that, to that house, that it's a huge bill for them. And I know many folks that would come to me, come to past council members, would say, hey, I have to sell my house because of this special assessment. Really, the way that I look at this policy is, I know maybe a few people are confused on why we're doing this or where this money is going, right? It's just a new type of way to fund roads, and I think a more equitable way to fund roads. Instead of hitting somebody with a $10,000, $20,000 bill, you're gonna be paying that bill over time. And in the long run, you're gonna be saving money, too. I mean, you're, if you do the ROI on this, I mean, your $10,000 bill that you would pay after 30 years is gonna be more than if you paid that $35, $40, whatever it's gonna come out in the end every year. So I would just really like to say thank you to everybody who's been involved with this. Thank you, staff. This has been a long time coming. I'm glad to vote for this, and I also hear the chamber. I hear the businesses, and I do want to look into what other methods we can have to maybe improve more roads, or if we are an outlier in the way that our roads, if they're more beat up than other communities or not. So I would like to continue to investigate that, but right now, I feel strongly to pass this today, so.
Councilmember Essler?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a lot of thoughts and ideas here, so bear with me. First, I wanted to dispel kind of a myth that you are either for keeping the things that the assessment policy, the way it is, or you're for what we have tonight, and that simply is false. This council looked at, I don't know, 15, 20, 25 different ideas, and we could revisit that anytime we want to. So this is not a this or that type of situation. Before I look into the merits of this program for this evening, I want to look at the current program and the people who have funded it over the years. There have been literally thousands of Oshkosh residents that have paid these large assessments for several years now. Imagine how they feel about having paid these large assessments and now others don't have to pay them at all. That's a huge inequity. This program tonight does nothing to compensate them for their large payments. Millions of dollars are still owed by residents, as the young lady came forward, still paying on payment programs. So they're paying for their assessments for several more years while others will be paying nothing. Not good. Now let's look at the merits of tonight's proposal and more inequities. If we're merely looking for a program that will eliminate special assessments and spread costs out over several people, this will accomplish the task. But I would hope that we could do better than that, that we would make the monetary burden equitable, and that's where this program falls short. We're going to start, we're going to charge each car that is kept in Oshkosh a $35 a year fee. So if you have three cars, that's $105 for you. But you can only drive one car at a time. I don't know how that makes any sense. Then some will say, well, you need to pay your fair share. And if you can afford three cars, surely you can pay the fee for three cars. Really? What if the three cars that you have are worth $5,000 each or for a total of $15,000, and somebody has a $70,000 car, one car? Where's the equity from the $70,000 car versus the person that has three cars pays more, but the value of their cars is less? So that makes absolutely no sense. I would propose that the person that has a $70,000 car has more money than the person with three cars worth $5,000 each. If the person with the $70,000 car is paying their, are they paying their fair share? So clearly, the broad brush approach to the $35 per vehicle is inequitable and possibly regressive. If we want an equitable solution, surely we would charge based on the amount of miles you drive on the road. That would only make sense. Not with this plan. Drive 1,000 miles, drive 5,000 miles a year, and you're charged the same as someone that drives 60,000 miles a year. Then you have the largest inequity. Under this program, vehicles over 8,000 pounds pay nothing. That's correct. The average citizen and driver subsidizes the vehicles that do the most damage. That is insane. Now let's look at another aspect of this program. Someone who owns land in Oshkosh but has their home outside of Oshkosh and the impact it has on this program. And I think these people in large part would be business owners and landlords. And I think these people in large part would be business owners and landlords. Under this program, they will pay nothing for special assessments, and because they live outside the city, their vehicles, both personal and business, won't be charged a wheel tax. This is great for them. No assessments and no wheel tax. Well, if they aren't paying for those items, that must mean that the Oshkosh resident has to subsidize that lack of revenue. And yes, that's exactly what that means. Another inequity. And if all this isn't enough, the city manager and finance director have already told us that in a couple of years, the revenue we get under this program will fall short, which means the fees only go up from here. I propose the council defeats this proposal tonight and look for another program. I believe we should lobby our state officials to give us more latitude on things that we can do here in the city. The state uses a gas tax to fund road projects for roads they own. We should be able to implement our own, or the state should do it for us. If it's good enough for them, it should be good enough for us. Imagine if you applied a penny a gallon to be added to every gallon that is pumped in the city. That program, the gas tax program, doesn't care how wealthy you are, doesn't care what kind of car you own or how many cars you can drive. You can only drive one at one time. That way, if you drive more, you pay more. All vehicles will have to pay, and people from outside the community that use our roads will have to pay for our roads. We may find that under this program like this, we could do several roads and actually get caught up with what needs to be done. And there was a gentleman, I completely agree with him. We've got, we do, I don't know, a mile and a half of roads every year. It just simply is not enough. We've got a serious problem. When I first got on the council in the year 2000, we talked about roads, and they were a disaster. Everyone talks about getting caught up with the roads. It's just not going to happen. And I spoke very briefly with State Representative Lori Palmieri regarding the $8,000, or $8,000, $8,000 pound limit, and she said, you know, that's something that they could look at to maybe change where we could get at those vehicles. But, you know, then I asked her about the gasoline tax idea, and she was very hesitant to say whether that could be changed or not. And I'm saying with the power that we have here, the municipalities, city managers, mayors, city councils, that we could lobby these individuals and have a fee similar to that where we could really get the job done. But quite simply, this program here tonight falls far, far short of where we need to be, and I think it's completely inequitable, so I will not be voting in favor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Esslinger.
Any other? Um, I'm going to keep mine brief. I've spoken on this topic a number of times over the last six-plus years. Our current system, in my opinion, doesn't work. The goal has been to find a fair and more equitable way to improve our transportation system, a system that we all benefit from, residential, commercial, institutional. Every single one of us benefits from a better, better-funded and well-maintained infrastructure system here in the city of Oshkosh. Is this perfect? No. It's compromise. The job of statesman is an old saying, something that they've forgotten in, at state level and federal level on a massive scale of how to find compromise, how to figure out a way to better people's lives, and it's not all about just getting a win. So with that, you know, I'm thankful for the work that city staff has put in on this, the hundreds and hundreds of hours over multiple years, the diligence that this council, as well as previous councils, has given the topic. Nobody's taken it lightly. This isn't an easy one. If it was, it would have been solved, you know, 20 years ago, but it wasn't. We're in the position we are, that we're in, and we're trying to set us on a different path, a different course. It's a step in the right direction. It's compromise. I'll support it. It's probably not a surprise to many, and I hope my colleagues will do the same.
If there's no other commentary on it, questions? If you'll take the roll on 24-96.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Esslinger.
No.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Period six, one.
Thank you. Next up, ordinance 24-97. This is to approve a zone change from urban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay to an institutional district for the property located at 240 Algoma Boulevard. Plan Commission recommends approval. Do have one person registered, Alicia Wenger. Come on up and welcome. You're registered for this one and for 25. I know they're connected.
They are. I accidentally registered for 25. I meant to do 22, so I no longer need to speak on 25.
Sounds good.
Hi, folks. My name is Alicia Wenger. I am the Executive Director at Kristine Ann Domestic Abuse Services, who I am here representing today at 206 Algoma Boulevard. So our organization is going through a very large transition, a much-needed transition, unfortunately. We have purchased the Beach Building at 240 Algoma Boulevard, which is just directly next to this building and also next to our current location. This will be expanding our shelter services from 37 beds to closer to 60. We will be able to add 11 apartments as transitional housing units for folks to stay with us for six months up to two years potentially, while regaining some life skills to get back on their feet and after potentially two years. So this zone change from mixed urban use to institutional allows our organization to start construction and continue on our timeline, which is slotted for March 12th is when our construction will be taking place. We only have construction on the first floor of the building. Otherwise, floors two and three are essentially turnkey for us, which is amazing. And then we, construction will take about four to five months, and we anticipate being fully moved out of our current building and into 240 Algoma Boulevard by September of this year, which also happens to be the 40-year anniversary of Kristine Ann being in this community. So we're very grateful for the consideration of the zone change this evening. And I'm also happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I have a curiosity question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, your current building right now, I guess, do you have plans for there? Can you divulge any plans that are going to be happening for that?
Yeah, it's public because we had many talks at the county board meetings, but Solutions Recovery, which is another local nonprofit, will be purchasing our current building to expand some of their programming.
Mr. Buell is next. However, I just want to be cautioned, it's not on the floor yet. Just want to make sure that if there's going to be going back and forth, we put it on the floor first. How about we do that? Motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
There we go. Now it's on the floor. Mr. Buell, floor is yours.
All right. I just wanted to say that this is amazing. You can stand up there. It's a comment, not a question, but either way, like, I am so in favor of this. This is an amazing project. It's sad that this expansion is needed in this community, of course. Obviously, I work in the same field with a lot of the same guests, but this is an amazing opportunity, amazing program, amazing use of the building, so I can't support this enough.
Thank you. We're very excited.
Deputy Mayor Erickson.
Thank you. Just to comment, too, as a former resident of the Beach Building, I'm very excited. There's no hard feelings. But thank you for your work. I'm very excited that my old apartment will be used for something good, so, yeah, thank you.
That's a very interesting perspective, right? No, I think it's a cool project. Obviously, Beach Building redeveloped a number of years ago, turned into a fantastic product. I personally love the cascading effect that by moving into the new, you know, larger facility, as Councilmember Buell put it, it actually, it is a little bit sad that we do need larger facilities. However, I'm so appreciative and grateful that the community supports you and that you have the ability to provide the services that are needed for the community and that, you know, your building, which has served you well for many, many years, gets to go to another worthy cause that'll also continue to help those in the community that need it most. So I'm really appreciative of that, so it's a good thing. If there's no other comments on this, I'd like to take the roll on 24-97. This is the zone change.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Period seven.
Next up, we'll move on to new ordinances. No anticipated action on this, this one this evening. This is ordinance 24-98. Amend Chapter 2, Article 5 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to staff offices and departments. We'll have more on that at the next meeting. On to new resolutions. Resolution 24-99. Amend 2024 fees and charge to schedule. I have no one, no one registered to speak on it. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Please take the roll on 24-99.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Period seven.
Resolution 24-100. Approve conditional use permit for an institutional residential use located at 240 Algoma Boulevard. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the conditional use permit? I see none. Please take the roll.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Period seven.
Resolution 24-101. Approve specific implementation plan amendment request for temporary campground at southwest corner of West Ripple Avenue and South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. I have no one registered to speak. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this? I see none. Please take the roll.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Period seven.
Final new resolution. Resolution 24-102. Approve 2024 Downtown Business Improvement District Operation Plan and Budget Amendment. The bid recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I see none. Please take the roll on 24-102.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Stevenson.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Esslinger.
Aye.
Mughawar.
Aye.
Period seven.
That concludes the action items for this evening. Now we're on to council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. Councilmember Esslinger.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, I think Councilmember Buell was talking about the man and the lady that came forward with the, yeah. Is this something that we, are we going to have a discussion item on this or just going to put it on the agenda? What?
I would want to get it under the agenda in a forthcoming meeting, but as a discussion. As a discussion.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just clarification, the folks who made the presentation requested a resolution, and they provided us with a resolution. Do you want a resolution?
I'm sorry. I want the resolution to be on the agenda to discuss and vote.
Okay, that's right. And I know Cheryl, that's what she was asking for, so.
I apologize for.
All right. So, I mean, we're pretty much going to take their resolution and put it into our format, and that'll be what you can discuss.
Can discuss.
Very good.
I see a lot of heads nodding. We don't usually get that many all at once, so.
I guess just, has, has the city attorney looked at it? I mean, it's just a resolution. I know there's not a ton of huge impacts.
It's a resolution, and in discussion with Ms. Hanson, the council is now prohibited by state statute from, for example, having an advisory referendum on this subject. So this is pretty much what this group's strategy is now, is to get resolutions, and we've done these advisory resolutions in the past on a variety of topics. So that'll, this will be your chance to, and I think the strategy is to draw attention to this issue, as we've done with other issues that have gone before council. So we'll provide that, and if you want to amend it, add, delete, whatever, you can do that.
Sounds good. Council discussion, direction to city, direction to city manager and city staff. First up, this is the continued council discussion regarding mayor selection process. This is from me, and then we'll follow it up with, looks like liquor license discussion from Councilmember Stevenson. We had this discussion last meeting briefly. Appreciate you guys taking the time and the diligence on it, and I know Councilmember Stevenson wasn't here at that time, not calling you out, just wanted to make sure that I didn't put forth something on the floor that wanted to have a chance for yourself to share comments on it and thoughts before any motions went out there or any thoughts, if you want to, if you want to go right ahead, and then I can go from there.
See, I mean, I've thought about this quite a bit. It's been a hot topic for a while, and I guess, looking over just both the state statute, Chapter 64 and Chapter 62, we are a little bit of an outlier in that Chapter 64 community, I would say. I don't know if I'm ready to have, get rid of that elected portion of the chair, but I do support changing that name from mayor to council president, just to clean up some language. I think the biggest thing that I saw out of this whole conversation is I do think, we say it a lot, but I think we need to clarify what we do, what the mayor slash council president does, what Mark does to the general public and even to us at times. I know maybe setting those boundaries for council people and then also making sure council, or making sure citizens know where those boundaries are, I think is important. So, yeah, I support the name change. I would prefer it stay in elected position. I just, at this point, I don't know if I feel comfortable having seven of us determine whether or not that's going to be appointed versus elected. So I'll say I'm a little bit of the middle ground, but I do support the name change.
Councilmember Hayes.
I would agree. Because this went to voters previously to decide if they wanted a part-time mayor, in my opinion, it must go back to voters. I also think that the greater discussion that has been happening, at least with myself and others in the community, is that some are looking at the type of government that we have and expressing concerns about a city manager versus, city manager and mayor position, or run government, sorry. I'm exhausted today. So I apologize. So I think that that's also just a lot of the conversation that I've been having with individuals that have approached me about this. I think regardless of what happens, I don't feel comfortable ever as part of council that the seven of us would make a decision that had previously gone to voters. Even if it had not previously gone to voters, I would still want voters to make that choice. I think there also needs to be, possibly, I think the minimizing of exactly the powers that a mayor has is also confusing, and those powers have been, at times, result, the powers that the mayor has, for example, appointment powers to the different commissions and boards and committees, is a powerful tool that the mayor has. And it is, I guess, disingenuous to suggest that that is the only power and to say that it's just something so minimal, when you can in fact shift the dynamics of the committees, the boards, and the commissions with that power. So, that's what I wanted to say.
If I can just.
Yeah, Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah, and I, I think, Lakeisha, that's why I, I support keeping it elected because, uh, per state statute, even if you are a council president, that is the highest elected official, that is the chief elected official, uh, there are a number of times in state statutes that mention those and, uh, I'm not gonna say we have an all-powerful mayor by any means, but there are duties outside just a regular council person that I, I think denotes, uh, allowing the citizenry to pick that individual.
Councilmember Bulow?
Sorry. Double click. This is a little bit rare for me, but I'm just gonna start with dude, I don't know. Um, I have seen so many emails and had so many conversations on this that are really, really powerful and passionate and really well reasoned on both sides of it. I get both sides of the argument, um, on this one. It is an extremely nuanced and interesting topic. So I'm really glad you brought this forward for this discussion and, and I, I want this to continue. But because, um, even after talking about this and listening to it and listening to a lot of people in the public, I'm still at dude, I don't know. I, I think that means that I can't confidently vote for it. Um, I do really like the idea of the, uh, council president that is elected. It doesn't solve the issue of the appointed seventh member if that person was a city council member already. It doesn't solve that issue, um, which is the only, you know, kind of the, the flaw in that, in that plan. I haven't seen anything that is, that is absolutely perfect that I can feel 100% about voting, so that, that's really where I'm at on that.
Councilmember Ford?
I mean, I've spoken to death on this one, but I, so you know, I think it makes the most logical sense that the community elect, um, its representatives in this legislative body and that we as a council select runs our meetings. I would favor a move where we have some other communities do this, where we have a committee structure that actually brings appointments and recommendations to the council. And we get to vote whether we approve or not approve, um, this amount of the appointment right now, right, the mayor, or we change it to council president is the individual that, that brings up all of us to approve. We do vote on that, that's pretty important. We have voted people down in the past as well, um, but that's a larger discussion. Bottom line is right now, we have a city council president that we call mayor. Um, so it'd be real progress just changing the dang name. I think that would go a long way, uh, towards clarifying what that job actually is.
Councilmember Bulow?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, um, what you just said, Councilmember Ford. So, changing the name but not changing the way that it is appointed, is, is that something you're amenable to?
Yeah, that'd be a huge improvement.
Okay, so like an elected city council president?
That's what Eau Claire does.
Okay.
At least there's a precedent and we wouldn't be totally alone like we are now.
So, okay, I'll go. Um, no, I appreciate the, the conversation on this tonight. Um, it's actually more, more progress than we made, I think, in, uh, the previous two discussions on it, so thank you to, to my colleagues on that. Uh, it's because Jill's here. Um, uh, I can read a room. There's, there's not enough support for, uh, my original suggestion, the idea, you know, uh, floated of, of doing away with, um, an elected mayor and just going to seven, uh, seven elected council members and, and we self-choose. Um, and I, um, none of you are wrong. There's, there's, there's goods and bads to both sides of it, um, um, and that's completely fine, that's how it works. If there is interest in a name change only, it still would require a, um, an ordinance update. It's not a resolution, so it's still an ordinance update. Um, and because it's an ordinance update to the charter ordinance, it's still a supermajority, so it still takes five. Um, if I'm going off of what I've just heard, there's, um, even including myself, there is, uh, there's maybe four for a name change. I'm gonna look to the right side of this DS because I, I heard from the left side on, at least on that particular topic, if there's interest in a name change only, uh, if I can get some sort of affirmative yes, no, at least to hear it, um, I wouldn't, I don't wanna give staff, I don't, I wouldn't want them to go on a, on an errand, um, to put forth effort on something that, uh, doesn't at least have five interested parties, um, just because it takes the supermajority. Normally it only takes four. If this was a normal one, they'd have marching orders, but I respect that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste their time either, so. Um, I hate to do it, but I'm putting the right side of the DS, kind of on the spot in terms of just at least giving, you know, a head, a head nod, a thumbs up in terms of, is that something you're interested in at least reading and, and having a little bit more discussion formally? Uh, Councilmember Uslinger, your button first there.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess, I think we're right that there is a cause for confusion as to what, in the community, what, you know, the mayor does, what the city manager does. Um, you wanna truly throw it into a tailspin, creating a fervor over changing the name from mayor to council president or what, whatever the case may be and taking that and voting on that and then trying to explain to the people what we're doing about that, you're gonna cause more confusion and you're rearranging the chairs on the Titanic at that point and it just, I, to me, it just makes no sense whatsoever.
I think Councilmember Uslinger, Councilmember Hayes?
Did you say customer?
Councilmember.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, the fan is behind me.
I told you the fans will allow them there.
The fan's behind me, my brain's not, okay, I apologize, I'm like customer. Okay, um, I, I would agree. I think that if we change the name at this point, it may cause confusion, um, more confusion than with the mayor position. I just, I think if it was going to be something that we were changing it, how it was originally presented to us, um, that would be the time to consider the name, but I just can't support adding additional confusion for just changing the name.
That's okay.
I don't feel that strongly either way, I guess, but, yeah.
Councilmember, uh, excuse me, W. Mayor Erickson?
Uh, I think, similarly, I, I'm not totally sure, but I think for the sake of moving the discussion at least somewhat forward, I'd be supportive of seeing that name change be, we could entertain that. So, Emma, yes.
Okay. There's five that, by my math, um.
Oh yeah, I'm fine with moving it forward, I was just stating my position.
Yeah.
That probably wouldn't change from what I just said tonight.
And we still need to, yeah.
Yeah.
That also allows to solicit more feedback from the, from the public.
Yeah, the, the getting of five right now is not that, uh, it's a five affirmative yeses and it's gonna pass, no, it's, uh, allows them, they have direction, city staff now would have direction to draw up any necessary documents and then present them, uh, when ready.
This would require, this would require an ordinance change and so we'll work on that. I'll direct the legal staff to begin working on that to present it to council for their, for their discussion and consideration.
Just a question for clarification then, if this comes forward, is the council voting on this to change this by themselves or is this a referendum question then?
That's up to council.
The direction at this point, um, unless you shake your head no, would be council action, non-referendum.
Okay.
Next up, process to review combination Class B liquor licenses, Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah, I just kinda wanted to circle back around to this one. A while back, we had, um, kinda got the knowledge that we have a number of people that are looking for liquor licenses, but we only have, I believe, two. I don't know if staff, if you have any updates on that kinda situation right now or, uh, I can keep going otherwise too.
I think Diane and I will work on, you know, sort of tag team on, on the answer. There are two licenses available that are not, uh, the reserve licenses. We do have some reserve licenses, but those carry a price tag of, uh, $10,000 or in, in one case, $30,000 depending on that. Um, but we have two that are just the normal Class B combination liquor licenses. Meanwhile, there's also some discussion at the state level and to change the definition of fermented malt beverages that would actually widen the amount of, uh, uh, those products that can be, actually change the definition, that would broaden it to be more than just beer. Uh, and I'm not sure if Diane, if that's something that you've been tracking.
I, I haven't been tracking, we're still waiting to hear from DOR, but, um, they are rewriting and, um, some of those seltzers would fall under a beer-only license, so that would alleviate some of the maybe, um, rush or need for the combo, which is the quota license.
Sure. It wouldn't guarantee per se that people who have a combination Class B would turn those in, but I think we would have to go through a, a, a reasonably assertive campaign to educate people on that change and they may choose to, to exchange that for, for a fermented malt beverage license. Um, some people, uh, might choose to still, in my term, nobody else's, underutilize their license. Uh, there are businesses that have a clam, a combination Class B licenses that sell those, those, um, what'd you call them Diane?
Hand items.
Yeah, the candied, the seltzers. That, that may or may not currently qualify as fermented malt, but if they could, you know, they could change over to those, which would then free up some combination Class Bs for those establishments that genuinely want to use them. So, that would take some education, um, and hopefully we could, uh, talk some people into doing that, which would free up more licenses and we, that squeeze happened in a very short order. We had a number of businesses that expressed an interest. Meanwhile, we had people saying, keep us posted, they hadn't applied. Once they knew that we were essentially, we had as many applications as we had licenses, we received two more. So now, we actually have four different, uh, businesses that have requested a combination Class B license.
And then I, I guess, uh, one of the reasons I brought this back up is because we, we talked a little bit about, uh, coming up with some sort of criteria to approve those liquor licenses and I, uh, I guess, when you received those applications, I mean, did they all come in relatively on the same day or I guess it, was it more the problem of you kinda had people in the back that you knew needed license and then more people submitted applications? Uh, I guess the reason I ask the question is because traditionally, we just do a first come, first serve and I, I think that's, really takes the subjectivity out of it. If we just say the application date was December 25th, it was Christmas, uh, and someone applied for and someone else applied, uh, the week after, it, it makes it so we don't have to have, I think it was called a pageant show last time, uh, we just look at dates. So I, I guess, can you give me this brief timeline and I guess how those, those liquor licenses came through?
They all came through fairly quickly, I would say, within the last six months that they've come in. Uh, probably, yeah, probably even the last four months. So it's very quickly because it was just before Christmas and we're like, we have a, we have a challenge here. We hadn't officially adopted a first come, first served, but essentially, that's what we were doing. It won't, I wanna make sure that, you know, if, that's very clear. The old, what we called the beauty pageant was that when we had, uh, one license become available, because 10 years ago, we had no licenses available and so when one would come up, we'd see a flood of interest in, in them and the council would then see a parade of people coming forward and making your pitch and then the council would have to select from one of many. Um, for those of you who've been in leadership Oshkosh, that used to be the mock council meeting was to do that and it just showed, kinda showed the extreme, but it was a legitimate, uh, concern. Once the number of licenses began to be freed up, we didn't formally ask would it be done on a first come, first serve, but in reality, it was. So I, I wanna be, I wanna be honest about that. Um, but there were people that because it was first come, first serve, they, they took somewhat of a, uh, you know, relaxed approach, but I know that on Highway 21, there's at least one business that wants to get a liquor license and probably two. Um, one has applied and I don't, and I don't think the other one has yet, uh, but they, they have an interest in it. There's downtown businesses that have them and then there's other places in town. Because we didn't have a formal first come, first serve, I'd be concerned that if we just said it's first come, first serve, it's not considering the fact that we, we were, we were telling everybody, relax, we got plenty of licenses and now suddenly, they're gone. In, in six months, we went from eight to two.
Sure, and, yeah, I guess, uh, really what I wanted to get out of this conversation was I want those two liquor licenses, I guess, in someone's hands. I, I don't think they'd do any good with us just sitting on them right now. I don't know what the, the council's flavor on how we, how we give those out. I would like to have a policy on the books that has something about first come, first serve. I think it's the easiest, most, uh, less subjective way to do it. Uh, and then maybe in the same vein as this, but maybe a little bit outside is, uh, I would like to explore some type of buyback for those, uh, licenses that are maybe underutilized and it doesn't have to be astronomical, maybe it's just, uh, I, I don't know what a normal license costs, it's like 400 bucks or something like that. Maybe it's just giving them the feedback, the original feedback that they paid. Uh, so those, I, I guess are my, my two reasons why I brought this up.
I would add one thing that I, I neglected to mention. When we started, uh, when we had a, a number of them, we added something to the application process where we asked the business to provide an, uh, economic impact for their business so that, to the degree that there were some economic, you know, benefit, um, and it was really just to demonstrate that. So, we did add that and I think the inference was that we did wanna see a significant economic impact. I, and I neglected to say that, so, um, and whatever the council decides they wanna do, I mean, this is the ultimate decision. With the buyback, I'd wanna double check and make sure that there's no legal issue with that, so, I mean, that's probably a question Amy wasn't expecting tonight, so.
Sorry, I know.
And I don't think Lynn would have expected it either.
I usually give you guys a heads up when I'm bringing stuff up.
No, that's okay, that's, that's a legitimate question. I don't know the answer to it.
Sure.
Councilmember Bulow?
Uh, the only, uh, thing I'd like to add is that I'm in favor of the first come, first serve, but I'd like to have something in there of, of well-qualified or, you know, of qualified establishments. I just don't wanna tie us to something and, you know, we're giving them out to people that are not gonna use them or, you know.
And I think complete application in my mind is a big, you know, like if somebody, people don't like complete applications, I don't know why.
Well, the, to city manager Roloff's point, um, we did, adding in that, that part about that economic impact was purposeful. Um, I am not in favor of having the quote-unquote beauty pageant up here. It's just, it's, it's, it's not a healthy process. Um, but they are limited supply and it should be about, you know, is there an economic driver? Does one, you know, is one a stronger applicant because of its economic impact? Is it, you know, hopefully it's jobs, that's what we all hope. It's, um, but maybe it's, um, you know, it's just, it's, it's the pay of those jobs, um, that type of stuff. So, that's part of it. I think that's, that's an important part, because there is a difference between, um, I mean, without naming names and without talking specifics, it wasn't that long ago we had an applicant, um, who was looking to use, I think, a, a combination Class B for, um, it was a convenience store. They wanted to be able to sell it for consumption within the convenience store comparative to, you know, a brand-new restaurant that's gonna employ, you know, potentially dozens of people, maybe, you know, maybe they're part-time jobs, but it's still, it's jobs. Um, there is a difference there. Um, so I don't wanna discount that part either. I, I know it makes it difficult.
Sure.
But I don't wanna discount it either, so.
Councilmember Bulow?
I, the only thing I worry about that is I don't wanna make it a situation where only the big boys get to play, um, that there's no room for a small mom-and-pop local tavern or something like that to be able to get a, a license that they need.
Yeah, it's a fair point, yeah, yeah. So we've given you no direction, by the way.
I liked it, I liked the buyback. I know I floated that before, but I think that's the best solution. If we have a, a supply problem, we need more supply. I think it, it's consistent with, with whatever we called it, what we have been doing, at least in the four years I've been here, is we've really defined these for what they are, which are public assets and trying to reverse that thinking that, you know, once you have one of these, it's, it's yours for life, whether you use it or not, so you can use it to try to monet, you know, monetize when you sell your property. I mean, that's not a healthy thing. Um, so further we get from that, the better.
Clearly, the council has some interest in continuing this discussion. Uh, I will not be at the next meeting. I would ask that you not put it on the next agenda because, you know, I have some thoughts and I'd like to just keep talking to staff about it, um, and, and just talk about the different options. Mr. Bulow's comment, you know, about the mom-and-pop, I think that's a legitimate issue that, that, that's a legitimate issue, period. Um, and there's other, there's other ones. I mean, there's, um, the, the beauty pageant typically gets some heart-rendering stories. Um, and, and I think that that's, you know, that's something that has value, but at the same time, you, that's not exactly what you're looking for either. So, if you could give me some time, I will come back to you.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, future agenda item, already talked about the resolution. If there's enough, any other future agenda items from council?
Uh, is this the time where we talk about our committees?
Um, no, in a second or two. Let me do, uh, future workshop strategic planning session, March 4th, that's Monday, 8:00 to 4:30, Lake Shore Parks, uh, Four Seasons Building.
A full breakfast will be available at 7:30 a.m.
But doesn't it have bacon?
Yeah.
It does not have bacon?
It does.
It is sausage.
Oh, no. I'm, there's meat.
Okay, good.
Uh, full-day session, come prepared for that. Um, uh, it's a good working session with, uh, department heads and, and city staff.
And, you know, I don't know if I mentioned this to you, we had added a focus group with citizens and we're gonna have some input that came from that as well. So I think, I think you'll enjoy that added feature. We did also have the, um, the supervisors', uh, session as well, so you'll hear, here's We did also have the supervisors' session as well, so you'll hear, here's what the public, here's what our citizen survey said, here's what our citizen focus group said, and here's what our supervisors said. So, you're going to get maybe not 360, but you're in the 300s in terms of the degree upon which you're getting input.
Sounds good. Councilmember announcements and statements? Councilmember Stevenson, would you like to go first?
Yes, I've been instructed by the Grand to make sure to tell everybody we are having our 140th anniversary this year, making the Grand the oldest theater in Wisconsin. The PBS special for the Phantoms, for Phantoms will be being filmed on the 22nd, 23rd of March. They have a performance on the 21st, but that one's not being filmed. So, if you want to be on camera, be there 22nd, 23rd. If you don't want to be on camera, come the 21st. So, yeah, just wanted to give that shout-out to the Grand and make sure everybody knew. Tickets are on sale right now. You can go to the Grand Oshkosh's website to get those.
Excellent plug. Any other announcements or statements? Otherwise, I have a couple brief ones. Recently, the students from UWO Environmental Studies, this is their senior seminar, this is in regards to our Sustainability Advisory Board, they completed their, what they call their Fall 2023 Final Reports. You can actually find this information on our city's website. It's under our Sustainable Oshkosh area. These are students from UWO who have a good connection and good relationship with our Sustainability Advisory Board and every fall, they work through, actually in spring too, excuse me, they work through some, some sustainability projects. You'll see projects on our website going back to 2018. These are some really interesting projects that they spend a considerable amount of time on, trying to, you know, make suggestions for, for the city of Oshkosh and how to improve. So, I direct, I'll direct you to our city's website. One other one, Tom and Penny Harenberg from the city of Oshkosh here, they were recently awarded the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association's Fellowship Award. Tom and Penny Harenberg are huge supporters of the city of Oshkosh, specifically our zoo. For those that don't know, through their generous efforts, the, the zoo is free and it has been for a number of years and they have an endowment created to make sure that it remains free for the future. So, we've got hundreds of thousands of people, excuse me, excuse me, 100,000 visitors annually roughly and that is all covered by Tom and Penny Harenberg. In addition to just the entrance costs that they cover, they've also been huge supporters of the otter and the eagle exhibit, the black bear and the fox exhibits. And so, just a huge thank you and a congratulations to the Harenbergs on the Fellowship Award that they were recently presented from the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association. And then I didn't actually ask Diane in advance, excuse me, Ms. Bartlet, did you want to talk about the recent election? I know new, new facility, I just wanted to give you a chance to plug how it went. I thought it went well myself, but you were on the show over there. I thought if you want to take a few seconds to, to plug how it went and talk this up for April.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. It did go well. The, the comments and the output from citizens was very good. Every once in a while, you get one, oh, why did you move it? You know, change is hard, but the majority of the people were very, very happy with it. Easy to get in, easy to find. Of course, we'll have to do a little bit more education, some more signage, things like that. Some people were trying to enter on, right on Irving, because that's the address for the building, but the entrance is actually on Jefferson. So, we'll, we, it was a good opportunity, we learned a lot and going to make some improvements, but it, it worked out well.
Good, glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Yeah. With that, if there's nothing else from us, city manager, the rest is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a professional services agreement in the agenda packet for me to report. It's over $25,000. The North High Detention Basin is celebrating its 10th anniversary and part of that is inspecting it, check the thickness, make sure, you know, do we have to dredge it or things like that. So, that's, that's in there. Just letting you know that we, the State of the City video will be released on March 27th. There's some timing issues, so we're going to do that. And as part of that, because it's a virtual event, the awards that we normally do at the State of City event are actually scheduled for right here on Tuesday, March 26th. At that time, we'll do our Community Partner Awards as well as a recognition of the boards and commissions. So, be ready with your microphone, Mr. Mayor. You'll be doing a, a lot of work that, that evening for that. We've notified all the folks on the boards and commissions that they've, that they've reached a five-year milestone, so hopefully we'll see a good group of them here as well. We'll try to keep the agenda light because of the, because of this, but, you know, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And our community partners have indicated that they'll be here as well. I'm not going to release that just yet, but I'll, I'll get it to you, so you know in advance, but we just want to kind of keep a little suspense for the event itself. But that's all, and I have outstanding issues in the agenda packet. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, otherwise that's it.
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
One second.
Don't everybody jump. Once?
I guess there's no question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1776.36]